Please believe me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as our own. Mr. Brown, if you would, if you read the sound thing.
Presents the framework for our success, the balance of governance, dynamic partnerships, and engagement.
Thank you very much, and Mr. Brown can be most much. Mayor President Hayden, if you read the vision.
Yes, sir, sure will. Sound City is a safe, prosperous, and vibrant community where diversity, innovation, and education drive success in global and competitive society.
Thank you. All right, adjustments to the agenda. Eight point two? You know, real is nothing.
And we've not had a chance to go over Article Nine yet, so I would suggest that we need to strike Item seven dot one for this. This one will go, I have it on again in two weeks. That's great, first meeting in January, yeah, thank you.
Any other adjustment? Have a motion for that. Agenda adjustment.
I make a motion that we approve the adjustments to the agenda.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed like sign. I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda. Motion is second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed like sign. All right, Senate again.
Now the motion. I make a motion that we approve the Senate agenda.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Senate again did approve. All right, those are the comments. If no one signed up. We won't bet. Next item will be organizational item. First, I want to be five point one, which is the two thousand and twenty-three calendar. Pay it away.
Is there a reason? We have two copies of the regular meeting agenda. One says twenty twenty-two, and one says twenty twenty-three. Assuming we're not approving the one for twenty twenty-two, which was age forty-eight in the packet, you're going to approve Article seven.
All that was good. But yeah. Same about that. We need a motion of each individual to adopt it. Vote on.
No, just a motion for both.
Okay. You have a motion for that?
I'm moved that we accept the regular meeting calendar and the holiday schedule.
Motion is second. Any discussion about it whatsoever? All those in favor say aye. All of the opposed like sign. And motion against. All right, next is five point two, board of four. Previously today. Spoken, first one is the Chatham Chamber of Commerce, right? Spoken with Commissioner Brown and said today, he said it's fine, he'd read up. His name was on here, he said he'd read up. Might just put him on something else since he ain't here and he's already agreed. Anyway, Commissioner Brown has agreed to serve that, and that's the player involved. Now, you see, you need a motion for each individual. All right, we have a motion to that day. Commissioner Brown, first representative on the Chatham Chamber of Commerce. There we go, motion second. All those in favor would say aye. All of the opposed like sign. Next one is the Chatham County Affordable Housing Committee, which I'm a service member on that, and alternate is the town manager Hank Raper, which continues, I'll continue serving on that, and you can be the alternate. Yeah.
I'm moved that we accept the Bear Price and Town Manager Raper for the Affordable Housing Committee.
Second. Have a motion is second. All those in favor say aye. On the opposed like sign. Here it is. All right, next is the Chatham County Climate Change Committee, and our current appointment is Mr. Ron Dameron. You have any, I've not had any contact with him. And if, I think we had a special, Mrs. Ford, you showed up. Yes, when the county went to Zoom meetings all online, where he lives, he has no internet, sir. And it's, that was important, and he didn't want this, but they weren't going in person, they couldn't get online. I think that's been resolved, now I think they're back to meeting in person, I know the others. Have you heard anything from Ron?
That's when we get in touch with him, see if he's willing to serve, and postpone this till January.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I think he's willing, sir, but I don't know, I've not talked to him. So.
You want to open this up? On the hand, or in this comfortable department?
I mean, I'm fine if he wants to, if he's still willing and serving, can make the in-person meetings, if not, then, you know, certainly opens up other candidates.
Just do that, because that's something that's sort of, he's pretty well informed. We just leave that one open. All right, next one is the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Vision Eight Triangle Area Rural Planning Organization, or CARPO, which Commissioner Brown is a current member that's serving on that. He said he was willing to do that again, too.
I make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Brown as the representative to the Transportation Advisory Committee for CARPO.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. All of the opposed like sign. Motion, here it is. Sound City developers could do. Guess who's on there again? Mr. Brown. He said he'd do that, too. If it's willing, it's the pleasure of the ball.
I'm moved that we accept Commissioner Brown for the Sound City Development Movement.
Motion is second. All those in favor would say aye. All of the opposed like sign. Mr. Brown is still on. All right. The next one is Triangle J Council of Governance, and currently serving is Mayor President Hages, and served as alternate as Commissioner Badley.
You know, I'm happy to serve again. I was elected as the Chair of the Foreign Trade Zone Ninety-three Board, so I can serve on both.
Okay. And. Commissioner Badley is, he's a veteran.
I think he's fine with it, I mean, I attend all the meetings anyway, so.
Okay, yeah, we'll, since he wasn't here, we'll read up.
I'm moved that we accept Mayor President Hages and Commissioner Badley for the Triangle J Council of Governance.
All of the favor would say aye. All of the opposed like sign. Okay, and you'll get up with Ron, see what it's feeling on the other one, we'll get to that. Thank you. Fire Department.
As those who have attended, I have not attended any election, the fire department officers on during twenty-eight. The process is going to be great for the test. For the fire department, in the first week, you want, I'm considering. Including lack of boxes in five on.
We need to read these names into the minutes. No, no, I just, illegal, bud. All right, these are the, see in your packet, where they say fifty-one in the packet, there, these are the folks who've agreed to be, and have been elected by their peers to be on officers in the police. Fire Department, and what's the wish?
I'll make a motion that we approve the fire department officers twenty twenty-three, it's submitted by Chief Murphy.
I'll have a motion is second. Discussion. Hearing none, all of the favors say aye. All of the opposed like signs. That period is where. This time we'll move on to presentations. And at first, six point one, Central Carolina Community College. Yeah. If, if you would, for our official record, if you take your name and address, and so we have official records.
Absolutely, I'm Mark Paul. I live at one eight five Asher Drive, rural North Carolina. Row resident of Chatham County.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Chapman. I live at thirty-one ninety B for Heretic. Stanford, North Carolina.
We're good, sir?
Yeah. Yeah, well, I'm waiting, I'm actually. Well, and so, Provost Hall is willing to chair most of the presentation, what we wanted to make sure we had, and thank you for letting us come. We'll be very respectful of your time, but one of the things that we all know is there is incredible growth coming here, and we are partnering with that growth, and we want to make sure that you know what we have available, what we can do, when we hear from you, what we need to be working on to continue to develop our partnership. So, we just kind of want to start with an overview of the college. Some people are very familiar with the college and have worked with us for lots of years. Some people may be less familiar, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Provost Hall.
Well, the first thing I want to say, of course, thank you for having us here. We want to make sure that, you know, that we are serving members of this community, of the greater region. That's one of the reasons why this map is up here. We actually serve three counties, that's our service area, we're about sixteen hundred square miles and change. Go all the way from Dunn over here to Sound City, a large area, and those are all the different sites, thinking your packet, it's a little bit clearer than this last screen there. But, one of the reasons I wanted to show that, is so you can see how much we cover. I will adjust, I'm used to having my own clear, one of the things we do, and we're here, I'm a member. Perhaps you teach classroom for ten years, and Brown, but. Our mission at the college is to foster individual mini economic development in our region. One of the ways we do this, next slide. It's to fostering change in our communities. I won't read these, but essentially, we've had tens of thousands of degrees, diplomas awarded from our institutions since we started over fifty years ago, almost sixty now. That enrollment number you see there, that was our second highest enrollment. Twenty nineteen was our highest, and the pandemic happened. We, this year, exceeded that enrollment, we're actually above that at the moment, and that's just our students who earn the degrees and diplomas. If you also consider all of our short-term training, or customized training, these international classes, we're in below teens. That we serve a lot of people in our area, so I just want to make sure I just reinforce that. The other thing I want to make sure everyone knows is that for every dollar that's invested in our community college, eight dollars return to this area. That's something that a lot of people don't really consider when they think about supporting community colleges, but. Moving on, we do all this through second learning for everyone. Two columns here, left side, the curriculum areas, those are typical, I have a, I gave you guys a nice colored art stock paper there, those are actually all degrees. Areas up here represent the various larger umbrellas, or that I can apply to sciences, you're going to see automotive technician, motorcycle mechanics. But these are generally for degrees and diplomas. The right-hand side, we have our continued education workforce at home, this is where we're really going to work with. We do currently already work employers in the area, but with most of you coming in, and other large employers, this is how we do that. We work directly with them, make sure that we're listening to what they need for their employees, and then we customize our training and education around that, in short deliverable, so that they can get their employees quickly than they would longer for us. Apprentice program that we have, we have, we can do that across industries, one of the more successful we have is our Caterpillar one down in Sanfordburg. We actually are training high school students who are also working for Caterpillar. When they finish that program, if they are hired, they're coming out earning around forty-five, fifty dollars as a nineteen-year-old. A lot better than I did when I was eighteen.
Too, so we had, we like to do a lot of things in the community, we had our, we have our Cougar Express now. Went from doing the tree lighting at the Lehman campus to drive through the pandemic, and we found that families liked that so much, we stayed with that. We had a couple of students helping us out last Thursday night, they're laser and photonic students. Those students have just had job interviews where one was offered a hundred thousand a year, and the other was offered ninety thousand. So, what Provost Hall is saying, that we've got to reinforce with the community is there are great jobs right here, great jobs right here, and right here and coming. You can get your education and training by coming through, we do a lot of partnership with our Chatham County schools, and you can get what you need by coming through them and through us to get there.
So a couple more things I want to point out, there, Small Business Center, the Center of Florida has small business centers in all community colleges, Philip Pappas is our Director in this county. One of the most recent things he did was run the Spark Program with the Chatham Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Cafe, which has really great workshops. Is actually one of the people, one of the groups that participated in that program. We are. It's one of, it's kind of example of how we're everywhere in this county and region. So, the next slide, we are in Chatham County, we have our Sound City Center, just later on in the presentation, so we're off progress Boulevard, I'm sure you guys know that, right near the hospital. We have the main campus, Pittsburgh, and then about four or five miles out of the Orange County line, Knuckle Center and Chapel Hill is our health science center. Go ahead. But if you could slow down for a second, I'm backing up to that one. Sound County, some of the community, the community engagement and everything, the picture on the top right there, those are, there's two important, the one in the green shirt and the blue shirt, and there's some other ones, those are the picture, does it span across downtown? That's one of the ways in which we are trying to engage all different types of communities. To do what Doc Chan was talking about, is try to help them realize the opportunities they have, become like the last. But you can go ahead and move on now. These programs are just, those are the ones that are based here, we have many more programs than this, and that's what that nice color sheet there is for you. But even here, we have, we teach our high school students automotive technology on the main campus, we teach welding over here in Sound City. Those students get there before eight o'clock, that's where high school starts, and I'm sure learning how well. This, come in spring, we're doing basic art welding at night, and that class filled up in two weeks, we're looking now to see if we can find an instructor to teach additional classes. Moving along, we do this through all the partners that we have.
Met Art Welding Center, Sound City.
Sound City Center here, yeah, all the welding in this county is here in Sound City Center. We're talking about that, you can, you can move on. We're looking, we're considering adopting that, make some modification that's related to view industrial. First year there, and if it's patient, well, speaking of other, in fact, other groups coming here. Doc Chan had talked about our partnership with K-12, I'm not quite sure how many people know this, we actually have our employees embedded in the high school, working alongside high school counselors. Ours are career coaches, and they're working with the students to figure out what courses they can take with us, or on their path, for a career, be that automotive technology, welding, university transfer. We have our people there working on that, and that kind of feeds into the, that's the central. Program that we have, I think everyone, most people should be familiar with the Chatham Promise, we have tuition for recent high school graduates. Chatham School Science Engineering, just on the road here, on the road, I think, they do two years here, in that facility at the Center of Innovation. When they start moving into their college classes, they come to the technical campus, they finish up, they're all agree, but others, they have five years to do it, a lot of the students do it for, they're earning their university transfer degree and the high school diploma in the same pile. And a lot of the students are actually coming from, you read on middle schools, it's Chatham Middle, James Waters, Monty, Bennett, a lot of those students come from the side, which we're proud about. We also do, yes, sir, you also work with the charter schools, or just Chatham County Schools? No, we work with charter schools as well. Dr. Ellard, would I, you could be upset and then say that, but mostly because we actually provide a lot of education, they come over to our Sound City Center and take classes, classes, there, we send some of our starters over there, teach some classes. That's been a really strong partnership, and it's actually expanded into the school that he's opened up in Stanford and Lehigh, so we're providing that across the board.
And we work with homeschool students, too, so we, our primary partners have always been our public school partner, but any of our K-12 students.
We actually have one of those counselors that came to. I'm sure, yes.
My youngest son took the welding stage, and then he went to C six C six, got his industrial matrix free, and his fourth year, energizer, making really good money. I think it's that C six C six, did energy data internship, so all on board. Just really have my child, and I'm sure it's going to have a lot of.
Appreciate that, that's a sort of.
I just wanted you to know that. He is. Now, he, he was very smart, spoke a lot in his thing, and he's walking us home, and that's what we need, you want hands-on. People don't realize that, they're thinking, everybody should go to school and get a four-year degree, and then come out and again.
That's exactly what we need, more and more people to hear, just what you said.
Because they can't come out and do what we need them to do. I appreciate that, I'm just wanting to say that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. If you, you can just go ahead and skip down to the budgeting and accounting. I guess we have a lot of partners. I actually stole this image off the Carolina Core. Right in the heart of all that is Sound City, we recognize that Sound City is a very important part of economic development of North Carolina, especially in the central region. Just like our service area, it goes from Dunn, Sound City, I know it goes beyond Triad, but. It's a really great image to see how it's, Sound City, we're at the heart of all that as well. One of the ways we're going to help with all of that is our War Solutions Center down in Stanford. Very similar image, very similar pathway there, four twenty-one, and will be six eighty-five. But, one of the things we might do is some of the first year training outside our city center here, and then doing more of the advanced manufacturing, the next level down at that center. Our Vice President of Workforce Development has been in all the rooms with all the. Down at that center, our vice president of workforce development has been in all the rooms with all the. Lawyers who are coming out of the area and working with them, to tell them what we can do. And already starting to set up training with those companies. We're partnering with Randolph and other community colleges, because Poet is in Randolph's area, so they're the leading. The college, we're going to be helping the players as well, just like Randolph's going to be helping us with both speed and other.
Yeah, so the one thing that I would add to that, Mark, Mark mentioned that we are engaging with all of the employers. That's part of what we're supposed to do, so we're certainly doing that, but what we're trying to make sure. Is that we very much understand what they need to begin, if there are modifications. That we need to make, we work with Dr. Jackson same way, we'll start to modify the programming that we have. Meet the needs of those employers, and he mentioned working with Randolph, we're working with nine other sister colleges. Because there are a lot of jobs coming and we've got to make sure that there are a lot of us working together to. Set up that talent pipeline. Early on, there's going to be some great needs, and then we want to make sure there's a consistent pipeline. Moving forward because. Just as you were indicating, it's really important to us, and you'll see a slide that, that. Is included at the end, but. It is very important to us that with all of this economic development that is happening. That our community residents get to be a part of it. And they don't get left behind, or it's not happening to them, the best way that that can happen. Is prepare them for those jobs, and because of the work that you all have been doing for years now, position. This part of Chatham County for this, those opportunities are arriving. And one of the things that we talk a lot about with folks is that we challenge them. To come up with a career that they're not going to be able to find right in the city, now I believe. We're just going to be here, you all have done that work, you've laid the groundwork. No job is to ensure that they are prepared for that. And, and we're here to assure you that we know that's our job and we are ready now.
I think that actually sums it up really well, I can't, instead of everyone else, the next, the next couple of slides, I had a, a picture of a truck on the ways. He's a partner with Randolph, like the Sandhills. Community College, this is an example of some of the partnerships, we have the Biontech partnership with nine other community colleges. Partnership around Westfield, nine other community colleges, just wanted to emphasize that we are regional. Training center for all the industry coming in. This is the last one, and that's, that's all I really wanted to say, I, I think Dr. Chapman and I could go on for hours. I really could go for us, and we both love the college, and we both did the college for a really long time, I did, I've been on my entire life, so. We, we could talk forever, but we're going to turn it back to those guys.
To add to what they say, one of the challenges ever since I've been on the board and for all of us is. A need that our community has had is that. One of our biggest treasures are our children and grandchildren, and. They're here, but when you got none, they had, they lay up because it was not an opportunity for them to work. I think, as they eloquently put. We could create, finally created of environment where there is going to be some opportunity. And the second part of that is, we want to make sure that all the citizens in the South City and Western Chatham County and. Chatham County as a whole, city for Western Chatham County. Is able to take advantage of what opportunities are out there. And I know, I've known Lisa for, Dr. Chapman, I'm sorry. I've known her for a long time, she's a very DAK person, right down to her, she's a good old mountain girl, so she got a lot of common sense. She just gets right down to the brass tacks and everything. And what we were talking about is, is we want to make sure that there's opportunities that are out there now. That I don't think the majority of our citizens know that are there. And in our discussion with them, how can we better get that information out now? And something, your consideration, we talked about, some, it might be some kind of opportunity for. The college to put together some little short thing, maybe we could put it in the water bill, something like that, promoting. Because that goes to all of our, our citizens in town, and I don't know how you feel about that, but they're, they're looking for ways. To get that information out better than what we had, maybe even putting something on the radio or something, I mean, I don't know. But that was one of the possibilities, and if it's okay with y'all, that and. Town manager can work that out, I think it would be a wonderful.
Makes complete sense, I think that the more people, because people don't always associate. They see, they see college and they, they see degree, they don't always see the, the workforce training. And that's one of the most important things that, that you all provide, that people don't know, I think, the greatest secret.
Also think that Chatham County might possibly need to. Look at, lean toward a different. Pathway where kids could go to two years high school. They go two years. Because that right now, everybody's on the four year. Everybody's not cut out for that. So I think maybe possibly Chatham County should look at. Retoward a two year. In the sun, one guy. There's a lot of counties and. That's what we. And I think one of the things, and people get here kind of quickly. You all are familiar, there are a lot of businesses, I don't think it's a community that says, you can something like. Now, there are other expenses sometimes, but we, we have other resources too, so that doesn't cover all the students as far, I know what you're saying. But there's a lot of students that only need the two year high school, they go to the two year path. I would say in Sower City, I'm not. I'm sorry. I'm saying in Sower City, that might be more. Possible for students here, some of.
I will talk with.
Well, the one thing that we have to remember is the school system doesn't make up that decision, that it is a state decision. As far as how many credits. It means how they get their credit, and they do the dual enrollment through. The early college, but also within the high school itself, we have. We do have that opportunity to have our students to be engaged in a lot of the other career pathways that. That the community college offers, and also as you mentioned, you have the career coaches who are there. That help in directing students. Through the different pathways as far as finding their interest and being able to. To find that place where they, they can, they can. Excel at, and I think that's the one good thing about it is that. We have been working with CCC and Dr. Chapman for years. Where, where our kids started. Early on getting credits from just our, our basic classes until we did get to the point where we. Go to the college for automotive, childhood, we had criminal justice being caught at the high school. So it was a lot of different things and a lot of different ways that our students were able to get things back in the day. But now with the more technology and all of that, I think. That's where our students, they're needing to have that. Have that exposure, and then also, as you said, families. Knowing and understanding that, you know, go into two year. And then transfer if you so desire. Or if you are satisfied with the two years and going out to work, then at least you have some. Educational backgrounds to help you. And I think that's the, that's the thing that we need to make sure of, is that going to a community college. You can do just as well as if you had gone to a four year school.
Well, even, and even the students that are, that, that go to a four year school are even more prepared. My daughter actually went through, she graduated with forty two credits, and she's going to, yeah, yeah. She says she's going to graduate, she's going to graduate with a bachelor's degree in two and a half years. But she was more, she was more prepared in her advanced classes than, than even some of the students that had already, already taken it, but. You're absolutely correct, I think, you know, making, making the curriculum fit the student. That is, is incredibly important, and meeting the student wherever they are.
That's my point, everybody. Like I am, in North Carolina, everyone has to take the same. Now, if you plan on going to college after the four years, you have to take the online education. Advanced chemistries and all that stuff, but you pretty much have to take four, four, four. No, so. Like my son's like, wow, this is just ridiculous, that I have to take all this stuff because. I would rather be doing something than taking the class. And it's not. But it should be somebody's decision to say, you can go for two years and decide. Do you want to go to high school for two more years, or do you want to get this path? And we not, I mean, we're not.
And that is a traditional public school, because the charter schools do a lot of that.
That's what I'm saying, we should be able to do that. I don't know what happened.
This is a wonderful discussion, you get just excellent points, I think. Based on what I know, that they've already told you, they're working on some programs. I can't get into that, and I think over the next several months, you're going to see more information coming out. CCC than what they have time a lot to do, but I, I do know all this information is not falling on, on deaf ears. We appreciate you coming and presenting it to us, and. I'm assuming you'll get up with the town manager and we'll come up with something that we, y'all did say it's okay for something to work, right?
But if you can move mountains.
Anybody got any other? Thank you very much. All right, next on Liz, airport update.
And I've asked, I'm going to give an update, as I was putting this together. It's been a long time, there's a lot to talk about. So I wanted to start with this publication that the N C P T has started putting together. The division variation in the impact. And then two years ago, I guess I did it in twenty nineteen, the last one that was released in twenty twenty one. And what they're trying to do is kind of gather economic data from every airport, every public airport in the state. Really show what airports are doing to support the state, local economy. So I wanted to just touch on some numbers. From a statewide level. All the airports in our state produce six one billion dollars of economic impact. So it was tremendous impacting, and that does begin to account for the bigger portion of it, obviously. I'm just seeing what the results, four hundred thousand dollars, four hundred thousand dollars reported by airports, yes. It's not just people working at airports directly, but anybody that hasn't actually been in it. Anybody that's flying something to an airport or cutting grass at an airport or anything else. It has a wide, wide ranging impact. I think that's important to kind of note, and think about what your airport can do more. As far as Sower City's airport goes, just so you can kind of see the reach of your local airport. The other piece of data that they've been gathering is looking at where people fly. And so this shows, you know, from Sower City, where people are going, and you can see how far they're going. So you are drawing. You know, travelers, you know, whether it's leisure or business. From places far away as Colorado and New York, Florida, so. You know, even though the local airport here might seem relatively small, you know, compared to others in the state, you know, people are going. A lot of places from here. As far as your local economic impacts, your airport produces over eight million dollars. And one point six million in personal income, and this is just, these numbers are generated by surveys. That forms or distributed, like I said, every two years, and it's really just a reflection of who returns the survey data, so. We feel like this is probably the lowest representation of these numbers. To just stay and turn in the data. But at a minimum, this is what your airport is producing, it's reporting forty five dots and we, in the local economy here. So, and it's got an impact, so that's sort of an instance one as well, so. So I want to show you that impact for your airport before we kind of talk about what we've been doing. And we have done a lot, but as far as completed projects, last time I came, we were just talking about. Designing what would be a major project. And there was a terrible condition that then was falling apart, so we completely reconstructed. Basically, all of the pavement out of the airport in the late and twelve fifteen. And the texted panels on each end of the runway, so that was done in two thousand. From there, we moved into replacing all of the electrical systems that support the runway, so. Happy is a motivational aid, it helps pilots. Figure out if they're coming in. All of the air to the lighting systems, all of the edge lights out there. So those were done in twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen. We constructed a concrete pass where helicopters swing into fuel at the airport, and that was a big. A big need as far as the helicopters, the hospitals that fly in to the regen here at the airport. So that was completed in twenty nineteen. And then in twenty twenty, we moved over and. Your entrance room, your parking lots, all of your parking lots at the airport, so we have really. Last, you know, five, seven years, basically reconstructed all your existing infrastructure out there, sure of the buildings. So all their cases and everywhere, all the lighting systems out there. The other thing we've been looking at is. Safety standpoint. For one priority is having all of your approaches here once clear, so you got clear airspace. The pilots that are landing and taking off, so this just shows where we're trying to make headway on making sure that the. Here, you did acquire some property off the end of runway four there. And then the follow on project was clear that, and it really makes a huge impact. Very close to the development of the runway, really not safe. People in the air will be on the ground, so completed that project. People in the air will be on ground, so, uh, completed that project. Um, which is one of the most, uh, last ones that we did out there besides all the land acquisition we've been doing. And this is just a, um, overview of some of the parcels directly adjacent to the airport that we have been purchasing and we're purchasing these for different reasons. Um, the one there on the far left is the one that we were just looking at. Um, and this purchase that was safety. Uh, we, um, purchased a couple of parcels there in the middle there that are going to be needed for future development of the airport. Um, as well as the, the free that we just purchased in this, that was the most current acquisition there. All of those are needed either for, um, future long term redevelopment, urban area. Where it's, we can figure out the entrance or that. Or having land where either you or somebody else come in to do it on there. So that's some of what we've been working on over the last, uh, several years as far as land acquisition goes. So with that many projects that we've completed over the last, um, seven years, I thought it was important to pile up that funding. How secret somewhere funding all of these projects coming from. Uh, you get, um, money from FAA, so it's federal money. Um, you get money from the Department of State, um, grant programs. And then obviously, most of these have local contributions to them. So on an annual basis, airport. You also have, um, been the recipient of some federal discretionary funding, um, as well as the recipient of a number of the discretionary grants. Those are awarded based on me. It's not something that you want to get. Um, most of these grants come with a ten percent local contribution, um, so that if they would be. They're federally funded, ten percent locally funded. Uh, you've been fortunate in, um, receiving for a few of these, um, hundred percent funding, where you have not had any problem on it. So that's actually dropped your overall participation down. So, you know, when we look at in total, um, we've spent close to six million dollars out there. You only had pay about eight percent of that. So I think that's a really good proportion in investment, um, out here at the airport. So we've been very successful in, uh, getting grants from things or help in the airport out here. Looking forward from that, I wanted to go through, um, what the big things that we are working on and I call them ongoing and upcoming because they are both multi-part programs. So there, yeah, it's not any one individual project moving over here. These are all kind of interconnected. Um, and the first one is what we're calling runway approach, land acquisition and obstruction pairing. And this goes back to the safety issue that the FAA has identified. Um, and we've, um, still a number of obstacles, um, primarily trees off both ends of the runway that are considered, um, uh, obstructions to safety. And so we've even been asked, we're trying to get a better handle on the extent of that. Like, what does that mean? Is that one tree that needs to come down? Is that a hundred acres of trees that needs to come down? Um, so we've recently completed, um, some new aerial survey. Both ends of the airport, um, and we've done some analysis, um, of the different, uh, safety surfaces that FAA has. And so we are working on right now under our current project, um, putting together some images that are showing. This is snapshot. It's really hard to see here. From what we've done, we've shown of the runway. And what, uh, what we think, how many trees would nine one have? How many properties are impacted? Then in a lot of instances, you know, we're talking about, um, you know, obstructions that are off airport property, print airport property. So just sperrying down a path of trying to figure out what makes sense. Um, but what's the minimum that we need to do to satisfy FAA? And then on the flip side of that, in a perfect world, if we did everything, you know, what would that entail? Um, so trying to get a handle on those different safety surfaces. And then the next step that will be, is how do we figure those trees? Are we talking about requiring properties to be simple? Are we talking about just being decent? You can go touch down on a tree and see the yard. Those are the next, that's what we'll be looking at on both ends. And I guess they don't want to own more property. If we're talking about factories that are not going to be developed for any reason. So we're really just looking at it from a safety standpoint and what needs to be done to maintain that clear airspace. So we're in that analysis period right now. Uh, so we'll be working with the town and the division variation. Wanted to kind of get to an agreement on what we can do. Uh, you know, what, what are we gonna, what are we gonna acquire, what are we gonna clear and? How long is that going to take? Funding, obviously. Right now, you are actually the recipient of a one hundred percent grant for the work that we're doing right now. Um, and it will fund some of all in pieces of this, the sum of it. What was some of the things? The grant, you have that grant? So that's nice that you don't have any of those. Don't think that that grant funding is going to take us all the way through everything that's done. That's something we're gonna work on to see if we can get. That through the S G I program. Um, but again, that kind of will come in with further, um, stages of the analysis. Program. So that's our big safety project that we're working on right now. And like I said, it will take, um, kind of multiple iterations. It'll be an ongoing process. And acquisition of any kind is not quick. Um, and, and it does have to follow FAA, um, procedures for land acquisition as well, whether that's seasonal. Decent acquisitions. So that's, um, one project. The other big program that we're working on is the new parallel taxiway, um, and apron expansion. And again, this is a big, um, safety priority. It's one of, um, both FAA and division variations. Develop minimum requirements for an airport of this size. Um, it keeps aircraft from having what we call back taxi on the runway. You really want an aircraft to land and immediately get off the runway in case there's somebody else coming in. You don't want them on the runway for a long period of time. So that's where the parallel taxiway comes in. It's an exit point. Um, again, this is a very big project. We're more. Whereas right now, we're looking at the environmental assessment. Um, so that's what we do to satisfy our N A R requirements. Uh, we just started that. So it'll likely take us about a year. So we'll be done. And then fall coming three when we have, um, not that division variation. In the meantime, with that, it highlighted in yellow additional lands that has to be required. So come at that development, we'll try to work that way as best. Um, that is being funded with your annual non-premierian. We were forward, um, we would move into design. It's a really rough schedule. Um, moving to design, wait until it's here, um, anticipation of construction beginning very late twenty twenty four or early twenty twenty five. So I don't anticipate that starting before then. Um, and again, that's really going to be dependent on getting funded, grant funding program from the state or the federal, um, the federal side. Coupling that with the local match that's likely to come with the development project of that size. And as we get into it, you know, that's one of those things that we'll look into whether or not the construction must be further phased. So maybe one side or the other. Start with, you know, there's all options that will be considered, uh, during the design. But we would hope that that would be open for business probably in, uh, twenty twenty seven. But those are the two major programs that we are working on, um, that don't really anticipate which else. Or they will play a big part, especially particularly, um, with, uh, you know, corporate aircraft in the airport, um, particularly as development here. Yeah, industrial sites picks up, um, that's a big happening airport here. Um, personnel, so.
Wonderful. I've done some wonderful work out there. I know you just recently acquired that bounce property. One thing that's been hearing dear to my heart is could we please clean that off? We've got a wonderful facility out there. We can't see it from the road. It does all that growth and everything. So whatever you can do.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Any other questions?
Thank you. All right. Next up, downtown advisory committee.
Always. But I moved from the past year, I worked at the downtown advisory committee, the department of transportation. Innovative new ideas for our downtown community. Um, then we have Chief Wilson here, the chairman of the downtown advisory committee. You guys, you guys, twenty twenty two downtown, uh, advisory committee recommendation.
We were before you all that, I thought just about two or three months ago. A little more, but some of these same recommendations and one day over. What probably would like to come from today. Flat out to, kind of, therefore the new company, the left, the job, we see that it's going around town. We see a lot of it. Uh, especially in a lot of intersections, moving chickens and trouble that was. Safety issue and a lot of things need to be discussed by the government and collected about, about human. Thanks all. So we'll see here the Beavis Street Lot, we discussed this at last presentation. Beavis Street Lot, of course, you know, the town owns that now. And, um, just to reiterate, uh, we thought it would be good to put a stage there and, uh, maybe any, uh, bit center, something that would fit on, um, the scale on that property. And so have a lot of outdoor events there. Um, the, uh, useful farmer's market. Food truck festivals, suburban festivals and a lot of outside, outside events. People are requesting, uh, for downtown locations to be, uh, there's to. Have some events. Force parking, you can have something up and about for the last couple of years or so and. This idea was the north of, uh, Open Bridge Avenue. Maybe to acquire a three meter, the, um, Chatham Railroad. Both the, uh, parking alongside the railroad, air by the Hudson Avenue for public parking. Especially in downtown, downtown. Of course, the rolling property on three eleven North Chatham Avenue. Could be used to extra parking from downtown area for public parking. Rural transformation, uh, grant this on the next slide. Apply, find there's some money for some downtown projects, especially for, um, uh, downtown civilization and zero negatives. And especially community and proud. Of course, as you see on the list, there's some other things we've done before for us travel and training to visit. Other dorm rooms, that was, as usual, we've done some of the videos ago that were very helpful. That were really good in the news to help put things effective and to enhance our ideas of. Count side of city. And I think. That recommendation list is up there slide. U D O and then that, in the downtown window, we got programs, we talked about it in the last presentation. And of course, to buy some property in town, also maybe the parking and some better uses. Uh, to in which aware of that. And of course, when, when we increase, um, downtown activity, they will probably be a need for some weaker streets to change. That's like, uh, next day activities. Monitor the downstairs and make sure that the, uh, this, that for the, uh, on emergency zone. That pretty, start the next day and consider all that. And, uh, do some of that things in social media, unimportant, unimportant. If you see some more private sites of media, it's a good thing to use for, um, more parking. The recent second avenue corner stay. Well, pretty much aware of that and we had a lot of discussion of that recently. Also, the, uh, maybe the public fix, a rectory and the, uh, this partner would be useful maybe for them from China. In some of them. But these are the recommendations that we have. It's the recommendations is. Well, can, yes, there, uh, some direction in the vice of, uh, how to see.
A memory of the one thing, it, it, you know, that advisory committee, they give some guidance on the new decorations, Christmas decorations. What, what name?
We did and, um, streets, streets, skate rakers and that. And that's what it is downtown to do. And I thank Doc for, you know, some support there.
The reason I brought that up, we've gotten a lot of, uh, uh, the comments about a lot of folks expressed their appreciation. They really liked them. So that's thank you. Doing they do it.
Thank you, Doc, for.
Any question?
We had a grand last night because my husband's aunt asked for it. They obviously must have had their. Christmas play. I'm not sure if they did or not, but they were hacking, they were fireworks there. And they were fireworks there and this was way before eight o'clock, like seven thirty. And the lights were mesmerizing us. I don't know if you, if you remember the boom right here, when the lights would go from street to street across like that. They had those lights. Plus they had the snowflakes we had. Plus they had the angels we had. And then they had the lights that went from street to street like this that were red. It up. And they had the trees that up. Does anyone here remember our trees being that up? I think there's something we need to look at too is adding to all that. And we talked about having some more lights downtown. Because that makes people cool down. It makes them want to go downtown. It's like, sit down downtown. And if anyone has a chance, they need to go to grain and look at what's going on there. I understand it costs money, but we still do have some of the angels we did put up. And they had the same kind of angles we had. Because still many go around, but the lights was moved and they had the trees lit up. And it was, it was awesome. I never been to the busy world, but I can imagine. And it was, it was awesome. I never been to the busy world, but I can imagine.
And that, that since you brought that up, and they have the information, that can mean something else on their, their project. That's what they can do. 200.
That's for us.
You've been watching the Christmas story. All right, next up, you were media advisor committee. One looking forward. I don't know we'd have friends. First one. Yeah, looking forward to this. If you would, go ahead and introduce yourselves and you add, just get that out of the way. Some of our members may not be as familiar with each other, and make sure we, the name of the host.
Thank you, Commissioners, my name is, I am chair for the Immigrant Community Advisory Committee. One time, so.
Good evening. My name is Marla, I'm the vice chair for the Immigrant Advisory Committee. Professionally, I'm a attorney, and I'm also a family to the local. I want to say. Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Victoria. I'm a graduate of Jordan Matthews and 2010. Professionally, I am a digital marketing specialist out of a higher ed agency in Raleigh, and very glad to be here.
I'm the last guest. I I work for county schools, the county department, and the mental program.
I guess I mentioned professionally, I'm deputy director for the Hispanic liaison over in the town office. But again, thank you. This is our first time presenting to you. To give you a little bit of backstory to the last year. Well, those of you that were here, you approved the formation of our committee. That actually came out of a, every 2019 action plan. Where there was a recommendation to form two or three hours. And out of that action plan, I was, you know, some of the purposes for our committee to help with the implementation of the plan. We serve as a communication, a bridge of communication within the Board of Commissioners and the immigrant community. We, such is what we're doing today, and we, you'll hear from our friends here today, that we've been providing strategies to promote not only sort of participation, but improve support and develop relationships between the Board of Commissioners, county members, and then also county staff. And also work with development of leaders within our community to represent and advocate for the interest of immigrant community members. Additionally, our group, the Immigrant Advisory Committee, we are meeting the second Tuesday of every month. Our, our agenda is also an open floor to be a forum for discussion for issues concerning the immigrant community. Then not only discussion, bringing those students to the board. The, this is a picture of, we're calling ICAT working group, or ICAT in short. Sometimes we feel like a little tongue twister, saying the full name of the committee. But you can see all our professional relations, the assigned staff, town staff, our town manager, Ms. Jennifer Johnson. And the past year, a lot of our work has been learning. We do have our professional work, but a lot of learning in terms of, what does it mean to be advisor capacity? What does local government functions in full transparency? But we also do want to, in, in next page, you want, you can see a long list of folks and those are those that are missing. We apologize, but we love you. But this is just a handful of people that brought this year. Have been helping us, guiding us, understanding a little bit of the role so that we can best advise to the Board of Commissioners in, in any things related within the immigrant community. That being said, I will let him turn over to the, I know you. Want to give you an idea of what we did within.
So considering the topics that were covered in the 2019 Building Integrated Communities and Southern City Action Plan for immigrant integration, that we, we designated five subcommittees based on the issues that line in the action plan. And our committees are communication, leadership, business and entrepreneurship, arts and recreation, and mental health, housing and public transportation, public safety and law enforcement. And the purpose of those subcommittees is just to review the action plan items in detail and discuss each item. So our, our subcommittees are divided into no more than three members, and we work with the town staff. So for our communication and leadership, we, it's Hania, Carlos, and myself. And we work alongside with Hank and Jennifer. And for the business entrepreneurship, our subcommittee is Sal and she's worked alongside with Mettales. And the park and recreational, is Shirley and Victoria. And they have worked with Jack Moon and Transportation, there was a state on that one. And the members is actually Hania and Victoria, and they have worked with Jennifer Meadows. Public safety and law enforcement. Um, the committee is Norma, Sal, and Shirley, and myself. And we have worked for. And we just wanted to acknowledge all the things that we have actually worked on past year. And those are the things that have been, you know, pretty much checked off from our plan or of the plans.
Just to clarify, the reason we have that update. We are going to give credit where credit is due. This is like you were saying, that creative approach to the town manager and Chief Wagner, their approach for additional hiring for new recruits. You, you played the one we approved, talked about it earlier before by label town staff members. And they, I wanted to highlight that creative approach that they did and, and incentive, different way of recruiting folks. And then also within the Google translation extension, that was Jennifer's doing, so kudos to her for the new town. I did want to clarify, as you can see, you originally, the board, the committee consists of seven members. But unfortunately, we have a vacancy with Ms. Norma, the former chair, Norma, now that she left the, the committee, I think, of, of, from the first class here, due to personal commitments and, and work in my town. So we are currently, I need to check with Jennifer, if there have been any needs, but we are looking for that. That being said, we'll go on to the next portion of our update. And I'll ask you.
So again, I'll create collaboration with ICAT. Given that our mission is to make recommendations to the board and address the issues that are currently facing. And that's our interactions with our staff and interactions with the local community. We welcome any other group to join in any meeting and with our reports, work groups or events. We're open to getting involved if that's the way that we'll learn about the issues that immigrant communities facing. In fact, at the end of the presentation, we have to write a part of information. So all of us come from different backgrounds, different professional backgrounds, and can bring diverse knowledge and input to these meetings. So we are excited and willing to get more, get more involved in that and everything.
And I wanted to point out, we have the opportunity to work with the North Second Avenue corridor, North Second Avenue Corridor Study. Thankfully, Jack and the members of that group approached, personally, it's all able to give a couple of ideas in terms of reaching out to other new members. So thankfully, they were able to, for example, go into downtown Chatham Rabbit. So it's a new location, but my observation, maybe they have a little bit of more interest in the community. But of course, more opportunities. I know that there was an opportunity with economic development. Unfortunately, I do have to apologize. It was right in the Fiesta. So I was not able to engage, but as you can see with the different subcommittees, all of the number, ICAT numbers are more than known to be an additional support to whoever is that I'm expressing them.
Actually, I would like to touch upon the community in, as part of opportunities for the world that we will continue with to research in the next year. So what we've seen is that there's a lot of things that the town of Silver City offers. And one thing that we've seen often is the opportunity for our residents where they are, whether that be through social media, website, or in-person events, to deliver this information. Because sometimes see that's where that gap exists about giving them that knowledge. So for example, in my personal experience as a professional working in social media marketing, we see that over seventy percent of Americans are currently using Facebook on a relatively usual basis. So being able to commute with them, communicate with them on social media, which I know that is something that the town has looked into but not fully pursued, potentially could be a way to engage with our citizens in both English and Spanish. Other idea that I'm throwing out there, which we will now take this next year to be built out and present to you in a formal recommendation, would be things as promoting events and knowledge using La Doce Chata, which is like subsidiary or tied with the news. And I've never, never tried to, tried to use a record. Another thing that we were thinking here is, I believe, WUNC, several hill with WUNC is working potentially have a radio station in Spanish. I believe they're in the initial, been in the initial survey process, but looking into the impact and how that would improve the communication with our Latinx community here in Silver City. There's some potential things to look into. And one last thing, which Mayor Price just brought up tonight, is the ability to able to speak through our residents through that wire bill. And so being able to send out communication to our residents there, both in English and Spanish, are all very creative ways in which we can bridge that communication gap and make it so that Silver City, the town of Silver City, is engaging with their citizens and asking them what they need and starting that conversation.
Then, and it ties into civic engagement. I know that in this first year, we've not only probably been learning, but we've also been listening. Been listening to, to get able to have some opportunity to speak to some of US Commissioners, plenty of town staff. And, and another predominant opportunity for growth was that, you know, that we talk about there's vacancies in the north committees, leadership, officials, staff, volunteering. And right now, just at the top of our head, I wish what, if only I said, you're most low cost effective opportunity is that water bill. Everybody in Silver City receives it. And I know that one of the discussions that we talked about, it might be either because you don't fully understand, but there is a lot in common within our community. And one of those things, we all get a lot of them, for the most part. And so we're able to see that and we're able to say, hey, you know, by the way, there's this, there's that. There's opportunities to, to work with the town, things that maybe they would not have received it through email or, because we don't have, because Silver City doesn't have a social media presence. But they are, they're able to see that. And if, let's say, I receive that bill, I personally, I'm, I'm not pursuing this, but as you know, a family member or friend. And this will ultimately benefit all residents of Silver City, not only the immigrant community. So that being said, the civic engagement, there are opportunities. It's, it actually applies to one of those objectives, we refer back to the action plan in regards to leadership. I know that we identified, you know, the Hispanic liaison, have a youth leadership program, it's called, we let you try. And it currently has a group of students, both in Jordan Matthews and in Seaport High School in Pittsburgh. So one of the components within their program is not only college readiness and there's also career readiness, but sort of engagement, leadership, things like that. There is a lot of community, there's one example, but we can look in other pockets in the community, the existing companies that are already in that. I'm just truly enhancing that. We do see rising leaders within our community. I know that I personally had a conversation with someone outside of Silver City and said, wait, leaders are coming out of Silver City? Yeah. Yeah, look at us, you know, we're here and, you know, and, and we're so happy to say, yeah, once a jet, always a jet. You know, that's that, that's that pride that we have for, for this, you know, home. That being said, our next slide, year two in the making, we want to continue to enhance and grow the form that we have for, like I said, issues impacting the immigrant community. We're going to continue encouraging community members to voice those concerns and seek town support through education, collaboration, advocacy, advocating some positive impacts for the immigrant community members. There are sometimes some issues that might, talk in the regular meeting, but there might be one-on-one issues that what we'll do, that it might come within our it might be presented to us. So what we do, we also have the special members, is that we will, you know, head up the staff members, say, hey, we have a one-on-one with you and have a conversation around this. So in a way, we're also supporting the town staff and, and while we're here in this, to be able to, to help them in their role and serving our community here in Silver City. We're also going to be looking for strategic collaboration. In our learning for this year, we've punished that, some of what are the roles and responsibilities on the local level. And then also learning, okay, what are the roles and responsibilities within county and state level? And that being said, there are some collaborators, collaborators already outgoing in the action plan. And so what we'll be doing also bases on what's going on in, in town of Silver City. Trying to look for those strong collaborations so that it's being presented to you as commissioners. So you can actually take it down. I know that within our community, like I said, there's a lot of interest with you in not only, for example, I know that you're, right now, they are, need for recreation. But we also understand that this is the discussion, the example, that they want to do that outside of the school, but then, for example, they are in middle school level and they might not have those resources, or they want to have some, like, issues on at home that may prevent them from you to get to that point. So that's when we talk about those strong collaborations with outside agencies within our community that are also studying. But instead again, thank you for your time. And in the next aside, we just wanted to let, point out, patterns of records over the whole of the town. Have, have been able to cover a little bit of the work that we've been doing this last year. And if you ever have a, a contact, we're invited to, with those. And then a little bit of the Fiesta, which needs a very Um, and then a little bit of the Fiesta, which he's a very, he joined us that day. Uh, and those of you that were able to go, um, I'm glad you guys were able to enjoy that as it's, you know, it's all to be out there as a community, um, as an, unless enough, you know, us were covered, um, a little bit of the work that the creation of the innovation. Um, and again, like you said, stay in touch with us. That is our contact information. Uh, the best way to reach me, chat to us. I know that when you first submitted a letter of interest, uh, there were some either outdated cell phone numbers, emails. So this is the most appropriate way.
My question and observation, very well, very good presentation. It's obviously put in a lot of time, a lot of effort into that. I can see nothing to say, Tony, yes, but for working with you in the future. Thank you very much. Okay, Nick, Parks and Recreation.
For questions, it's great. I'd like to hear who the guys move. I want to report members to your body.
Hey, town manager, commissioners. I have a small presentation. I'm just going to update you on what we've been going through for the last year. Um, our programs and so forth. Um, if, there you go. First, we'll talk about academic programs. Um, twenty twenty-one, if you look at youth basketball, you'll see that we have a total of a hundred and ninety-two participants. Twenty twenty-two and twenty-three, roughly two hundred and three. It's growing. It's continuing to grow. We're retaining older age groups. Use the T-ball, baseball, softball. It's about the same year to year. Hit ball. This is, this is encouraging and exciting. Um, in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, we had sixty-three. And if you look over at twenty-two, twenty-three, we got a hundred and five. We also added another division in there, which is really incredible. It's awesome. Football cheerleading, ninety-two, forty-five, eighty-six, thirty-nine, pretty much the same thing. Many leagues moved to flag only. Uh, uh, football realignment with Allens County Parks and Recreation. Special events. We had a good year. We had a lot of fun. The community really came out and enjoyed what we did out there. And we, uh, the advisory board members enjoyed it also. At least I speak myself. Um, we did the Easter extravaganza. And I want to tell you, Jack did an incredible job for us here at Parks and Rec. He managed to take the COVID, you know, the regulations, no longer do this and do that. And he still put together programs that were wonderful for this, this, uh, community. So I want to commend them. Saturday, April ninth, at Bray Park, we had approximately three hundred and fifty of attendance. That's not bad. Uh, if you look over on the right, there's Easter bunny and that's a costume. And Mayor, we would certainly like to extend the invitation to you, maybe next year, you know, that, that it'll fit you. I promise you.
It looked like me, didn't it?
We had the spring, uh, chicken festival. Again, this was an amazing event. The turnout was amazing. If you recall, if you were there, um, we hit rain. So we had to wrap up early. But I believe that number would have went well above four or five thousand in attendance. It really would have been amazing. Friday Night Flicks. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. It's in Bray Park. We had approximately three hundred attendees. We also had a photo booth the last few years. And that was donated by Ben Suggs of Southern, Southern Entertainment. And it really, really made a big difference out there because they come out and they love to have their photos taken and we put them on Facebook and so on. But the biggest one of all was Halloween Truck or Treat. Um, I don't know if anybody's seen Chief Wagner out there, but it was scary. I'm telling you, it was, uh, just I, I was like, I don't know about this. But it was in conjunction with Friday Night Flicks. We hosted twenty-eight vendors and, and we had a costume contest. This was our first year having a costume contest. And we did it through the photo booth that in was donated by Southern Entertainment. They flocked to that booth and it really was an important part of what we were doing out there. Excuse me. And, uh, that was our first year. I'm hoping that we can bring, uh, Southern Entertainment back out there. We had fat five categories. There were five winners. It was donations that was given to us from the community. And, uh, we posted that also. Supper with Santa was just the other night. Santa and Mrs. Boss made a splash from the North Pole and they, it really looked great and it was a great event. We had fifty-six out of sixty show up to that. So that's huge compared to the last couple of years. If we can move on to facilities. Renovations at Paul Braxton Gym. I don't know if anyone's been over there, but I'd encourage you to go see it. It's really amazing what, what's happened to that floor. Um, all the old wax and paint was stripped, it was sanded and relined. It really is a nice, nice court meal. We got a recommendation about where the, where the crosswalk is. By Bray Park going across the street over by the army, I guess. There's no light and a lot of folks jog over there early in the morning. They walk over there. So Jack had put in for a request with deep energy to get a light in there. So we're waiting on that right now. And it's also a safety concern. So, uh, I, I'm hoping that that comes through. Um, we got new scoreboards by down there. Uh, they ordered them, installed them at East Ramsey Gym. And they're very, very good looking. Grant funding, this is going to be quick. Grant funding, Chatham County Recreation Grant was thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, it provided, uh, laser grading to base, to number one and number two baseball fields at Bray Park. Cut in infield lips down and sobbing, which made the, the, the smooth transition. It also, we, it also helped reconstruct the scoreboard on field one. So that money was well spent. We're waiting, uh, again, Jack put in for a half a million dollar grant. For accessibility for parks grants, what it's called is, it's funding to provide renovations at Bray Park Penisports. The playground that would provide better accessibility and inclusion. So let's hope we'll get that one. And finally, this is all I got for you. I want to, I want to say, I'm sure he was here. Yo, he was an amazing, he still is, an amazing young man. He's up and coming. He did a wonderful job here at Parks and Rec. And when I found out he put in his resignation, I was really saddened by it. And I thought, no one will ever replace Daniel. Well, Jack did it. Jenny Clark, I don't know if anyone has ever met her yet. Please go over, meet her. It was like, Daniel never left. I mean, she just came right on in there and just started performing. She was involved with all these events that I just told you about. She's never done them before. Um, yet she still headed it. She got it done. And she, I think she is an amazing asset. To Silver City and Parks and Recreation. So having said that, I thank you for your time. Hope I didn't take up too much of your time. And is there any questions?
I've had several numerous students on past, on these case cards there, where they can do their study. It doesn't have to be a big area, you know, I just feel like area where they can.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. Forget about the invitation now.
Peak buzz burning my brain. Pretty good concludes all our presentations. We'll go on to the old business now. Uh, we've taken seven point one off for now. Seven point two is water meter project.
Thank you, Mayor. That, that eliminates all of your blue pack except the last page. You won't come back without the next item. So I would say important to the water meter project, uh, where it's, we'll remember seven, eight, a couple months, that you were previously doing a presentation by something that the old is, previously to where about replacing our, um, our meters that we say why we did from. And my favorite presentation is that it would, it would cost a lot of money upfront to replace half a month forward. But to the main funds of what you make to replace that should be covered through cost savings, through more accurate meter reading. Since we have that, the board, you're going to have to proceed more information. We went through the R and Q process, a request for qualification. And we put out bids with other companies to see what the qualification for a new disciple was. Um, we've gone through that process and it's exactly that same company. Um, we just now were able to negotiate on what price to be and we pursued that information to the board back in the prior year. By getting that sign. Um, your students, the individual sheet leaders, of course, the schedule table, which is, uh, the budget amendment. Um, that goes with this reader project, largely and factually. And the rest of the increase, you see three for users there. That first video, which is one million, six, seventy-two, nine, if it sells. That would be the amount of money that we would need to finance. And that can be financed directly through, um, to us, uh, for this project. The one million, three hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. That's the money that we have from the American Rescue Fund dollars that we can put down as a product. So we only have to finance a one point six, which would be two million, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred dollars total for this project. We feel like that's on the high end. We hope that that can come in under. We asked them to shoot high. So we wouldn't have to come back to you later with potential, um, I mean, the budget we have, meaning the project. So we're hoping we'll ultimately bring under that. That's estimating forty-two hundred total meters for the project. Um, the goal will be to have all the sun in the first year. And then we have a fifteen-year service agreement where they will be responsible for fifteen years, certainly saying that annual fee. And at the end of fifteen years, we can consider restarting this process again. But, um, this will be a substantially improved service for both town hall staff and also our residents. Um, town hall staff would have, um, more accurate information as a resident, um, up to date and real time reviews. Um, the ability with the next song, the necessary and real time from an office, it doesn't need somebody out. That potential exists. Where we make the initial residential development, this new system to be installed from day one, currently. First time to replace something old or something new. This is a roll out from day one. Um, and this is a pretty good feature, which is why it's a community, it's a private business. This will quickly become a, a new expectation for customers. So let me have this type of technology that comes through, your utility bill with the entities, um, which is the next step for us. Um, during that presentation, it also showed a, you know, PowerPoint that listed five percent, seven percent, and ten percent, I believe, of what they call revenue enhancement. The extra money the town would make off of, um, I guess additional building from more accurate that I've gained in rates. Um, they felt five percent was very conservative. Their presentation, if you remember, looking at our numbers, we're estimating two point two percent would pay for the cost. Um, the concern about being able to cover the cost, we believe two point two is about wherever they can break even on this. To cover it. This also would assume a, a ten-year financing agreement at four point seven percent. Which obviously we like less than that, but that's not the market today. Any questions from the board?
The, the point two needs, is that included, is that included installation? Oh, I assume our people are going to follow me.
Or it, it's not understanding that they installed.
They do. So that's turn.
Right, that's something, something that's already properly, that's issue, they will move on to.
And, and remind me that there was a portal that residents could go on and keep, you know, can, they could get alerts, uh, from, on their water bill if there was a spike in usage. They can get, they could, they could be a push to their phone as an example.
That's right. Through the election, some force them to do electric facility, far as customers.
The answer is great. I know that's, I know that's what the current is, is, and it's fifteen years. Is there any options in there for renewal?
So there's a fifteen-year, um, service, but, but the financing.
Okay. Well, still, can you, there ain't no renegotiating.
We could, we could, we could refinance eventually, right, Tom, right now.
Yeah, because I think it will over that, over ten years.
But, you know, I find it amazing to be in a position, which are prepayment penalty, but maybe more advantageous if we're in a position to make your more aggressive payments. The moment they all. I think one point six seven three dollars seems like a lot of money, but we'll refund.
Makes sense. I mean, it's some, it's something that's going to, that's going to improve customer service. It's going to improve accuracy and, you know, be more transparent to, to the citizens. I think that's, that's, that's real good.
But, and, and the old rating system is additionally try, and try to install meters on, we'll say a timely replacement cycle, replacing a penalty here. And you never were able to do it. Sad not being able to get around to it, like a budget funds, you've got the years you need to, you're becoming unreliable. This pretty much guarantees quality service, but get it all upfront, it needs agreements. And if you start the process over, you're back to the same issue. Fifteen years, it's going to pay for itself through some process again.
Oh, what, the current issue we've been having, Dylan, does this take care of that too?
I think it will. I mean, it's I, I don't think it replaces all of the issues because a lot of it deals with communication issues between meters and financial software. Uh, I believe this is correct. I believe it would. I don't want to say tend to, because I can't figure the financial side of Paris. I'll hope they'd be compatible and not change it if they are. But as far as the meter side, is it, yes, it would correct that. But we'll have it straight along with that, particularly a point.
And, um, probably this is something for future, something they about to do. But they keep talking about it's going to be a revenue increaser. But I think where that could be misconstrued is under the current system that we're operating. We got some giving, some away, then we got some not charging them. You know, not charging enough. And that's going to level the playing field. Not that it's going to be a strictly a revenue stream for us. It's just making sure everybody is paying the same thing across the board, level of play.
It's equity issue. You're making sure that your readings are accurate, so you're paying your per number rate. Some may pay more, some may pay less. We do already know that there has been testing of our meters and it shows that this is, this is an issue now, that in trying to just dummy meters, that's this process. Finally, we find a lot of places across town that we are underdoing. And that's one of the problems that we run through, the, the recent, our issues, if we've found that we're underdoing.
But it goes back to, you know, the residents can go in and, and they can see on the portal what their usage is and they can, they can make decisions that are They can make decisions that are of the best interest of their, of their households.
Who would do we need?
I would ask the board to include the budget amendment. The news always been. Program.
Like, more quick, he, board members, do you have questions?
Uh, these units will take care of the, of the customer we have now. For future growth, we might have buy additional.
This is, this is forty two hundred meters, and that's what we have on the residential side. Plus probably. Uh, probably a few hundred more, probably all that. Um, but as people come in, we'll say new subdivisions developing, that would be part of the development through process that we will allow that. They would have to pay part of the development costs of the meters, so that, that cost will not be passed on through the other residents or town, it would be for new development.
Any other, any other question?
I'll make a motion that we approve capital project ordinance two, two oh two three dot eight, water meter replacement project.
We have a motion in a second. Any other further questions? We vote in, all of the papers they asked, right? All of the votes like sign. Motion get it. On the lens. Austin Recreation Board.
Preference in the last page you detected, eight nine five. Town hall staff meeting has you rely on a full unit to provide contract service and managing your pool. They take care of the management facility, they hire lifeguards. They also keep the pursuit of any sales that take place on, on the site, uh, as well. We have seen a, a pretty significant increase in the cost of that contract, understandable reasons. Difficulty in hiring lifeguards, completion that we've seen with about everything last year. We are recommending that we bring that process in-house and, and reason being is. We believe we can provide that service now where, where costs are, just efficiently and effectively ourselves. And give ourselves the flexibility. Have a full-time person, be able to do other tasks as fast as you can operate, and that is it. Parts you're asking discussed for a few years, I'm needing the special event coordinator, program with our names. This will allow us to keep a covert on its own. It's the benefit of having special events person, we're calling a recreation coordinator, that's the typical term used. Around the state for the type of position. Just the ability to have someone to manage the pool, um, get the necessary certification. But then the rest of you, they also have the time to manage their special events. So without any additional funding in the budget, we're able to address full composition, usually which delays. Uh, puts off for a little while, meaning for it in further. Give the time off the victory, maximize process and go and set further. What question you brought up?
I'm gonna, when we first started doing this boom thing, you know, it was. Good. Monetized. Issue, we, you know, about, I would say. Oh. What about the liability? Of it, right now, you know, we, we're pretty much, I don't know. We're independent contractor. Store. And we have. All right, you take, you take care of. And it, it's sort of out of our. Uh, out of our jurisdiction, you know, we don't worry about. If we, if we take this back on, what kind of liabilities are we going, are we setting the town up for? And what's the, uh, expense of that going to be?
So the league provides our property liability insurance, and we've asked that very question, and. Sense that we did is that it really doesn't change our exposure at all. Uh, we already own the facilities, you know, with, if ours, something happens on it, and claim, ultimate claim, so we're gonna sue the town regardless. Um, we asked to increase our premiums, we're called to the village, and they're different. So I, I think it's. Having a third party, we're hired, we're still responsible for that third party, that's not a. Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not having to use a contractor. Certainly, it's, we get to do that.
Okay, and the, it, the. Don't cheat. I, I'm, I'm not clear about the one thing that this person you're talking about having. On there, with that, they, when the pool was open, are they gonna be like the pool? Manager and be on site while the pool is open or?
So I think it's a mix, um, and, and we've checked with other jurisdictions that go through the type of process, you're not, you're not required to have them. They're not like cheap lifeguard, it's not their responsibility to be there. They're responsible primarily for making sure that the facility itself is running like it's supposed to. That the chemicals and, and management of, of the chemistry of the pool itself, and there's a certification that required the whole. And they were responsible for making sure that it properly staffed with, with lifeguards and overseeing and managing them. But that's no different than it is with contract right now. Um, there's not a person like that sitting there managing lifeguards, they hire the lifeguards from their. From their office and make sure that they do what they're supposed to do, totally. But on that piece, I don't, that wouldn't be any different.
Well, you know, one, I almost remember Kathy Price, but she, she, I know she had been like overseeing the pool. Every time I went, she was there. Now, well, I ran from getting that.
I get it, yeah. Okay, uh, under, she can, Kathy was the pool manager for Brinkley. She was very additional, as you call head lifeguard. In this division. In her role. Yes, she is a pool manager.
I'm gonna be back, um. I've spoken with, we asked for a similar arrangement there. Somebody is responsible for being certified by a person managing pool. There's a team of people who are actually managing in person, so it's all, all that all.
Well, okay. I need to bring up something, because I've, I've got an approach on this time. This is just a discussion. Had several people come up to me about, and. Had phrasing, questions asked. Why we want, why we wanted to add more people on the staff? When can't staff some of the departments that we've already got, i.e. the big example is the police department. I have an answer to that. I think it's something, it's something, married some discussion somewhere, but we are, I don't know about the rest of them, but. I'm getting a lot of, um. Oh, you know, want to know what we're doing at the police department, why is it closed, you know, that whole, that whole thing. And it's probably something that, uh. That's. A little effort into or talk about something, because it's just, it's not playing. Real well with, uh, the folks in town. There's nothing wrong with it, don't get it wrong, but, you know, it's sort of like. Like that, so. I don't know, y'all been, what have y'all heard?
Yeah, all I, all I get is is a pool gonna be open one time. That's pretty much that one. And, and, you know, and I think that, um, you know, the, the, the one, the only, the only concern that I have relative to this. Is, I know Carolina Pool Management had different, you know, not just them, but in particular, lifeguards are hard to come by. And they would be able to, you know, they would bring. Lifeguards from other pools if they were short-staffed here. What, what's our, what's our plan to make sure that we've got enough lifeguards to, to cover the summer? If we go this route, when it's not, you know, because it, it was all on them to provide that.
That's correct, it's, it's hard, well, just an example, it's hard to come by manpower for anybody on that.
Well, I think that one of the issues might be the cost being certified, so Tam would pay. Get them certified, and they sign a contract. It won't be there for the whole summer, it's like, it should be like one hundred nine. I think that might be one of the issues, so Tam would say, okay, one come, yes. I don't know how that works. I'm just saying that might be one of the things. Thanks, Ma.
I, I think that's something we kind of have to deal with along through the process.
Yeah.
We, we've really been thorough and trying to investigate whether this is the right way to go, it came to cost. And really dated the contract, and what are our options? For what recreation coordinators are paying those, their fifty three where, where the math would fall, and we're really relating the math really down. So I mean, trying to put it on a scale, we're forming it together. And, and it's often the tone on the side of being cheaper, um, drilling house, but that was better sold. Um, we're, we're really at that point where if we're gonna stick with having a pool running at the contract, we need to do that now. Um, because we're really pushing up against the deadline there, on their hand. If we will create this new position, I think we can do it very, I think we'll work very fast, and I would recommend. In first of the year, we go ahead and start the process of kind of buying. See if it'll help that we need. And if we may all run into that issue.
And the other thing, I think that it, it was a potential positive, because with Carolina Pool Management, they sort of dictated. When, okay, we're gonna open Memorial Day and we're gonna close Labor Day. This offer, since we have it in, in-house, we have the option of holding it open a little bit longer on weekends. Um, you know, in the fall, or maybe opening a little earlier, gives us that additional flexibility. That citizens, because I, I've always been asked, what, you know, can't, can't just keep open, the, the weather's great in September, why can't you stay open? Contract.
How about that, you could dictate the prices, right? Because, you know, senior citizens could possibly get it.
They gotta just get out right here. Yeah. Uh, we're gonna. Yeah. Hey, we die crazy.
Currently, you remember about two years ago when I came to the board? Uh, identified that we would need. The next five years to get up to a staff of around forty, forty-five police officers. At that time, the board, uh. Made a commitment that for the next two years, we will be able to hire three to four new officers. We found ourselves in a position that due to the current climate of leasing. And the hierarchy of recruitment and the money being spent. To retain and hire new police officers is astronomical. And currently, my budget does not meet the needs. So to answer your question, we, we have six conditional offers out there right now. Um, but we face, uh. Financial restraints due to our demographics between east, uh, to North Raleigh Durham and to the west in Greensboro. And we've attempted to attract officers from smaller agencies, but, uh, suppose officers that's more ages, because they like the working environment, they don't want to become. Uh, busy, uh, during their shifts. So we're at a crossroads in many different areas. Uh, that's just one side of the police department that we're talking about. Uh, the other side is, it is, you know, we had some questions about the records clerk, as that transformation from the nine one one center. Uh, transferred to the county. So currently, um. We're at a deficit. Uh, and in that perspective. Where it may be, like, uh, Tom and I had discussions about it, you know. Those views moving forward with those positions that we're trying to work out, but. Currently, I feel like we could add, uh, not add, but just retaining the position that we recently lost. For stabilization, uh, during normal working hours. Currently. If, uh, Andrea was on her job and a records clerk. At the medical appointment, she's got children in school, she's sick, training, whatever. Uh, it comes to time for where we close the doors during the day. I don't know another public entity within the town that closes for lunch, but we do not. So, you know, last week we had a critical incident. That caused the department to be closed two and a half days, because it has to rearrange staff, take care of the shooting that we had. And to resolve a vacation. So there were times for two days that the office was pretty much shut down. And, and I feel like we are missing a customer service fee somewhere. In that, in that, uh, in that narrative, that we really should consider moving forward with rehiring that particular person that we lost. And Hank has a, has a different side of this that, that we've discussed in person. You can share.
Well, let me ask this question, you know. Is this, I know we're getting ready. Go have. Bush workshop season and all that. Is this something that we need to have a, maybe a special work session and just discuss that?
Well, I, I mean, I, I think, I think that, you know, maybe this, 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 I, I think what we need to do is we need to have. As part of a, as part of a, of a, a budget session, is sort of that long-range strategic plan. And, you know, what, what is, what is that, what is that? You know, three, five year look like and how do we get there? I think that's gotta be part of the budgeting process.
It, it almost, it feels a little bit, you know, not so much. You know, we, we had, get more information. Than, you know, all the citizens, you know, citizens out there, it sort of feels like we're missing.
And. Bluff the holes in the dike.
Yeah, that, and that, so, uh, I don't think we need to just let that and just keep going. Uh, you know, we, we need to address it somewhere, I don't have a solution to what that is. But, uh, it, it's, it's been talked about a, a lot out in the community. Put your ears in the ground, it won't take you long to hear.
Well, I think it's something we all, they, they don't follow public safety, they don't take it from the look for each, but you're doing that. I mean, I think there's different issue. Moving the records clerk to the county was something to save the town money, and it's still about it following the service, was something that. Was disrupting one of us here, it was affecting around here, that wasn't, that wasn't a huge issue. Um, but we finally got that, got that done. Coverage of the office at the front, front desk staff, that's something that we're looking at structurally, the western structure of the department, and making sure we get the rest of it there. That's, that's a second issue. Third issue, making sure we have roof on the ground, adequate number of people on the street. For trying to hear us out as well. But I'm gonna make sure they're staying separate, they are, they're in the same apartment, they are totally different issues, um, different, except for town. Um, one of the unique issues that we have, we need versus hiring a position like recreation coordinator is. They can hire someone for this job soon, so they'll get them certified and they're ready to go. You can't recruit police officers like that today, you're hiring them without even being able to do certification, so they're no good use of office for quick months. And they gotta go to school and be certified, then they gotta go to the field training, that's gonna take an extended period of time. If they make it through all of that process, they get to day one, it's a firm list and brand boss. And they're still gonna need a senior officer working the shift work. So if you're looking at most of the year, when you hire someone today, what's someone actually able to. Be ready to go in the office before you. And, and we've gotten our number count so small, while it keeps making aggressive actions, really working on improving. We've been making some hires, we made a couple hires the past week. It's just that you're starting a queue process that takes many months to be able to turn somebody loose, and in that meantime. You've been losing more officers. Before they can put you and them on board. And, and there's a lot of reasons.
Back on the recreation. We sort of got, thank you. But we, we.
You need us next decision, yes, no, maybe?
I, I prefer you would, now, as far as total position. Is that, I, I, I understand that you can leave the question about these for recreation and how that looks. I would ask these things, except for it at all, because. Police department issues are truly unique issues that every police department dealing with across the country right now. This issue with recreation, as far. This issue with recreation, as far as the number of positions we have on the panel, we're growing up to the point where we're going to be at a hundred and forty or so, which in a law room actually helps the town, because it could ultimately lead to lower health insurance costs, and that's another, of that threshold. So, from that standpoint, having more board and.
And, and other, this side of that is, you don't want to have too many chiefs and not enough leaders either.
So, this is definitely not too.
Have, tell me about this, of course, you touched on this a few minutes ago, but I don't, I don't think we, that, what's the deadline for Carolina Pool, man, when, when we got to tail them off?
Yeah. The mission there is a lot of the thirty-first. Let's do this extension. Sure. Yeah. That's three trials.
Yeah. Where was thought, we're going, and then we got two commissions, not here. We, of course, wish they would, you know, put their example.
But I, I, I think, I think the fact that this, if, if this is being paid for through the contract, it's revenue neutral, actually revenue positive to us, because if we have, if we sell Silas to be T-shirts, or Silas to be pool T-shirt, we get to keep the, we get to keep the revenue from that, so.
Yeah, sorry, that's right, from the, all of that, we went back to the town instead of going to Carolina Pool.
Which is not inconsequential.
That's right.
Yeah, the town also has to pay for lifeguard.
That's correct.
Having a lifeguard.
Well, we, we, especially, we're working for a five-year. For ten months and four left. Uh, I hope the nation has looked at it, I'm thinking somewhere around twenty dollars a minute. We ran into stairs, twelve dollars an hour, and it shows that's dealing with that many poolers at the same month. Which Carolina Pool Management is not paying, that they're paying less. Which is, we.
And then there's that's, you know, um, you're going to have.
A lot of good opportunities for summer jobs for both citizens. My daughter's life, both my kids' lifeguard for, so, it's, it, I mean, it's a good opportunity, good leadership.
You are new. In.
So, I mean, I, I know the, the, I know we're, we're missed, we're down too, but I, I still think that this, that given the timeframe and given the discussion here, I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the recreation coordination, coordination position.
I'll say it.
We got a motion, second, any additional discussion in that particular thing? Not, if, if, vote, all of your favorites say aye. All of opposed, like, son. All right. Next is, uh, budget amendments. Float Mary, they going to pool?
That's how it happens.
That one wakes more.
That one wakes water and food.
Uh, you know, we call it water. Get you off me, baby.
Who has not seen Teddy Shark? Come on. You're too with his, you're too with his friends.
So, the board has, I'm going to actually pay to present the statute of amendment. And that's it. This is a budget amendment that we've controlled at meetings, in front of the special or the back of the plan, that we agreed to don't find a part of the line of quality, makes other prisons never firing, obviously, that's a piece of being introduced now, so it's not accounted for in our later return. So, we're asking for, uh, budget amendment for two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars of the pool from our unsecured debt assets, and our thirty-five. Um, uh, for reasons that, on finance, that's only, we're estimating our net assets, now, around six point seven billion dollars.
Let me ask a question, because I think, maybe, something, remember, we're going to talk about a little bit later. Is this going, is this going to garner us any more favor with DEQ than we've been getting? Well, upon a man, I, I, yeah. Okay. Yeah, because, you know, I, I'm off, because you already noted that I want to get DEQ off around my neck.
Right.
Seems like they get heavier, rather than. But we'll table that.
I'm happy to answer that question.
All right. Table that, backwards.
Yeah, and this, this is something we, we, I think we, we don't have a choice.
Yeah, I agree.
But we got, but, you know, again, we definitely got the capital funding, or the, um, resources to do that, so.
This, it, what was that press thing, because this is part of that?
It's not, we've already approved that. I probably heard that, uh, who currently will arrange the press, not allow some higher press, so, time the press would save money, for the pain.
Well, yeah, yeah, I, I agree with that, I just. Yeah, it's all of this.
It all, it all, all for the two points we got here.
I'll make the motion that we approve the budget amendment two oh two-three dot nine as presented.
Motion is second, please for the discussion. All of the favorites say aye.
All right.
All of opposed, like, son. Next. All right, now, just before.
So, we had, um, several posts out there this week. Um, I'll pick on two of them, there were R and P for master planning, one was for the conference at Landy Springer, and then another was to, you know, comprehensive planning for the Parks and Recreation Department. We've never had something truly comprehensive for either one of those departments. Uh, that move that I went through in, in open doors, and, I mean, that was gone through the process of four years, we will come back in January with a recommendation for a particular firm to hire for each one of those plans, but all was a middle for high quality, so whatever site will be very close with. Um, I would estimate it's more over two hundred thousand dollars total for both of those plans. We'll have to come back and check. But, to address that, um, estimated timeframe of completion is, is about nine to ten months on the Parks and Rec plan, and about twelve months for the competition ready to play. Ten-year timeframe, I think the verdict was pretty good for Parks and Rec, maybe slightly less, seven, eight years on their comprehensive plan, before they have to move again. But, as, this is kind of a finisher, hey, so, it all comes back into the budget, the long-term plans, we need to do like, the, the plan with the budget, the budget to the CIP, and all the math to plan back to the CIP to make sure that we're addressing the long-range issue, and we're not letting the urgent, of the day-to-day crowd, not the important long-range issue.
So, question, um, so, uh, with the cost of that, is there, is there a way we can, I guess, fund part of it in this year, and then the, the balance in the next, the next fiscal budget, or does it all have to come out of the current fiscal year?
Work at that, I would imagine it's probably kind of this year, but I don't.
Is, is there not a way that we could, you know, tie it to certain milestones? Because there are milestone payments, because then that would, because if you're talking nine to ten months, it would seem that we could, if we could do it in milestone payments, then that spreads it out of the, over a two fiscal year period.
Right, a lot of these problems are tied in also, I think.
Yep.
And on the contract. That's, that's possible, and just, obviously, I can't predict, at that point, or at what mile, so.
Right, no, I, I, but, but I think when, when we look, if, if we, if we open it and are awarding it in the January-ish timeframe, then you're talking, you know, that's, you know, there, I don't know what the substantial completion would be by the end of July, or by the end of June, when, you know, when a, um, the new fiscal budget takes place, I'd just like to see it, if, if possible, spread across two years.
As in, okay. One of these dates, I got a year, this reminds me, it's been a couple weeks, this is on the calendar. One of these numbers, oh, hey, we've got a lot of things going on, so, I want to remind you. Next time, uh, Thursday, the Thursday, December eighth, we have the town Christmas parade. But we're going to meet in front of the fire department at six thirty, if you're in this state. Monday, December twelfth, we have two things that day, so we're doing the delivery, uh, to Brooklyn Christmas fan that morning. And we're also having our keeps planning, um, that we've been planning a lot, but.
Six, six o'clock, right?
Yes, ma'am, really important that everybody's there.
Yeah, Elizabeth.
So, we're going to change that. Um, if you guys, and if I ask that you do the PowerPoint, so we're going to have it back here. I promise Elizabeth, so we'll have Elizabeth. Um, um, something, we'll, we'll provide dinner. And you, you're in so down.
That's six.
Yes, ma'am, that's six o'clock. Um, we tentatively have Thursday, December fifteenth, for the town boy Christmas party, we're still exploring a lot going on there, if, parts of January are a lot higher than we hoped for for that, so, I'll, I'll let you know, I think he knows, I do not believe, you know, that, no doubt for sure. And reminder that night, and there is a big, I'll be Christmas, it's going to be the only meeting for December.
Well, we have a special next Monday, right?
That's the keeps planning.
Right, so, yeah, well, but, but when you say two, oh, you know, the only other meeting.
It's not the regular.
We don't agree, okay, I just want to make sure we're clear.
Right, and so, leaving tonight, this will be the last regular, it's going to be until third, uh, January, which will be a huge day, except for Monday, the holiday. And that's a lot of days, so, like, one only in December. Um, and finally, uh, from my report, um, I told you the last meeting, we made the selection for, uh, the planning director. So, Al, Nancy, that move, all of this payment process, had a, a couple really good candidates, who were really good about the selection. Um, this individual may find her nerves to her current employer, uh, so she'll be joining us December thirty. Uh, her name is Jennifer Baptiste, and she is currently the planning and zoning manager for the city Fayetteville. She brings over twenty years of experience in planning zoning, she's got over fifty major subdivisions. Um, she's involved in, has an intention plans, work in urban and rural things, across the state, has, has worked for the state as well. Uh, I think she'll be very nice to the staff, we're all really excited to have her, going to have a solid sixteen.
She goes back there.
She plans to move back up this way. I, I spoke with her today, and she, she has not selected somewhere yet, she's got.
It's hard to find.
She's got at least a month at her lease, where she's at now, we don't know when she starts, so, we got a little window to figure something out, but she does want to come up this way.
That's good.
Yeah, right.
Date, what's?
Uh, primary Christmas party. When's this party, yeah, when's this party?
That's fine. Yeah, one, but. I don't know. Like you're supposed to be there.
Well, I know.
Well, it is having a code.
I think they reel it back in to just volunteers only.
Chief, let's see, because I'm, uh, uh, chief said something about that the other month.
I forgot what the date.
I'm nervous.
Good luck.
Oh. Any, any question? Oh, oh, I do have one, because the board has asked you. Um, and Eric Floyd is back, he's, um, December thirty. Um, that note has requested to relocate his office to where Mr. McCorkin L and, if you had her now on the back, and they fall on the left side. So, that's who Ken talks us to make you aware. So, we keep talking, and he's off currently, he's the planning director, and see where that is. I think, you know, what everyone just wanted to. The advanced notes about it.
You ready?
That's a fair question.
Alan Gardner. You've been mighty quiet, yeah, yeah, that's just like, no. You have an body comment?
It's cold, people must stay long, we need to find Eric. I'm cold. He was there with the greatest, uh, holy.
Couple of things you could update, so, one, I don't know how much you can share, but the incident, you, for the shooting, we had, do you have any, is there any update on that? And, uh, the second part of that is still came out on Facebook today about our fines.
I know, the policy.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we just, we just saw that at the end of the day, um, we're, we're a little perplexed by that ourselves, because we kind of received this one. So, the media somehow, like, that's what the town didn't know about, we have not received this one.
And that's where I'm going, I got to ask questions about that today, and I'd, I'd get a look at Facebook, find that right.
Thank you for that information. And it immediately has support.
Yeah, and it, it's not very good. Well, yeah, we'll talk about that.
We learned it that way, too.
Yeah. Excuse me.
Yes, sir, mayor, so, it's a, it's an open investigation, I think, uh, we provided the officials with some basic information of the event, the timeline of the event, and, um, it appears to be, uh, some type of domestic-related, uh, incident. But at that, that point, at this point, that's all I'm going to reveal, because it's still an investigation, and we still are developing some patents.
Yeah, and, and that's good, don't, I, I had, I have, and I, I knew that it was, and that's all my information.
Right, and then again, uh, if you guys remember, about a year and a half ago, uh, the department and planning, uh, we tried to attempt to do, uh, some some serious, uh, enforcement and active, uh, nuisance regarding that property. And so, I have reached out to those, and then we did improve a little of that. All, all because the calls for service, uh, are, can be a concern, uh, for the department, and, you know, the activity at that current location, uh, that's not going to be good.
Yeah, and, well. I brought it, meant a couple of daycares.
Yeah, there, there's several, there's several proprietary issues there, that's right, I think, but we, uh, I reached back out to those state partners, to see if the cameras ended that with a little bit more, uh, at.
Thank you. If, any other, you have anybody come here?
I reckon we got a good flow session. I hear a motion, I make a motion, a good flow session for soon, on general scratch, one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven eight four. Motion. Motion saying, and all of your favorites say aye.
Let's take a short.